That's so funny. He's coming, he had to use the bathroom.
I'd like to thank everybody for being here. This is Binghamton City Council Business Meeting. Today is Wednesday, February 12th. I'm calling the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Murray.
Exactly.
Councilmember Middleton. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
President, I'm sorry.
You're good. Councilmember Rathwell, present. Councilmember Matavetsky. Is it? Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Present.
Council President, Dundon.
Present. So we're gonna do the approval of minutes first. Can I get a motion to approve the previous business meeting minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, can we do a roll call, please? Okay. All in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to reports from committees. Any committee that would like to report?
Traffic Board tomorrow morning, 9:15 a.m. And Councilman Kavanaugh had the intention of being there as well because the big item will be reviewing the Leroy study.
Anybody else have?
I had a quick question, Hadassah. I had sent you over an email. Did you get that?
I will have to look at it after the meeting.
No, that's, it's not a rush. I sent it like a while ago, but I was just wondering if you got it. Just let me know.
Hearing no other reports from committees, we're moving on. We have no appointments for tonight. We have to set public hearings. The City of Binghamton will hold a public hearing regarding RL 25-21, which is an ordinance amending Chapter 410 zoning to clarify and correct text. This public hearing will take place at 6:00 p.m. during February 26, 2025, regular city council business meeting in council chambers. Residents wishing to participate in public hearings may do so electronically by emailing their comments prior to 1:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting to the clerk@cityofbinghampton.gov or in person at the meeting. So we do have a public hearing tonight. It's a public hearing regarding RL 25-32, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds not to exceed $2,63,600. If anybody would like to come down and speak at the meeting or speak for the public hearing, please do so now. This, just so everybody knows, this is only for the public hearing regarding the bond ordinance. This is not public comment for all of council at this time. That'll be next on the agenda. Sir, when you begin, can you please state your name and whether you live or work in the City of Binghamton?
Here we go. Is that better? All right. Do you need me to repeat my name or anything, or are you?
We got you.
All right. The placemaking handbook has an interesting quote that I wanted to share with all of you. To be successful, cities need destinations that attract people. They need destinations that give an identity and image to their communities and that also help to attract new residents, businesses, and investment. The bond measure before you tonight will have a direct impact on the city's ability to create an attractive destination at Ross Park. Part of that bond ordinance is for paving the roadway coming down into the zoo as well as redoing the parking lot. And I just wanted to share, not only is the city making an investment, but the zoo itself has secured over $1.3 million that we will be investing into the park property this coming year to create a new creekside play and learning center that will be directly adjacent to the new paved area. So we're excited to be partnering with the city and appreciate the city's efforts to create a regional destination that everyone can be proud of at Ross Park. From the restoration of the Carousel Project to the new trails that are being developed, to simple things like fixing potholes and putting new striping on our parking lot. So I appreciate everything the city has done and hope that you will all vote in favor of this bond ordinance. Thank you.
You so much. Anybody else who'd like to speak at the public hearing for the bond ordinance? Clerk, can you read any comments that were emailed in, please?
From Abby Kaiser. My name is Abby Kaiser and I live in the 2nd District in Binghamton and work in downtown Binghamton. I'm writing to the council to express my support of the bonding proposal and the capital improvement plan to be used for the Parks Department, particularly for the paving of the Ross Park parking lot. Thank you for your time and consideration.
So seeing that nobody else would like to speak and all the comments have been read, I'm gonna close these public hearings and then we will move on to public comment. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
And a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to public comment. Residents wishing to speak public comment may do so electronically by emailing their comments prior to 1:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting to the clerk@cityofbinghampton.gov or in person during the meeting. If anybody would like to come down and speak during this public comment time, please do so. Thank you so much for coming down to speak. Can you please state your name and if you live or work in the City of Binghamton?
My name is Elaine and I live on, in Binghamton. I think it's, I don't know the exact address offhand, but anyways, I did bring in some rough drafts. You guys can add to it. I'm gonna keep adding layers to this so you can get this strengthened, okay? All right, so I'll start with the first one. Reasons why court judges should fine Elon Musk and other billionaires and-
Can you pull the microphone a little closer to you, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Reasons why judges should fine and freeze all assets and rescind or remove naturalization papers against Elon Musk and that includes overseas. They can seize his property because he's breaking serious laws, okay? Him and billionaires, all right. Now we'll give you the list of it in a minute, all right? First one is hacking into our state payment systems, which are not allowed to do. Number one, there's privacy laws in place to protect U.S. citizens from this. Hacking into Medicaid and Medicare system, that's breaking our public trust for our healthcare. Hacking into our federal payment systems. Demanding Democrats leave so he and other billionaires can enter our U.S. Treasury to steal all of U.S. Treasury money. Demanding Democrats leave all our reserves so he and other billionaires can rob all our reserves. And another thing that just happened today, him and Trump are in cahoots to ban all Board of Education sciences. That's breaking public trust. It's breaking laws that are serious. Now, the next thing I'm gonna do is Trump. Reasons to impeach Trump. One, he sides with GOP to end all Board of Education. He sends ICE on all school buses to arrest all illegals. He sends ICE into public schools in search of illegals. He sends ICE into churches and they accuse all of being illegals. Another thing to look at. He keeps freezing funding, agrees with GOP to do not pay any USA citizen. That's funding that was prior approved, that he's supposed to release. And another thing, he and the GOP want to end all D E I rights, diversity, equity, inclusion rights. He agrees with GOP to end all world healthcare and wanting to ban all Board of Education sciences was very bad today. I don't see this as happening to the children. I see this happening to the older adults that go to college or university on the education. That's odd, stay on the matter.
Thank you so much. Anybody would like, anybody else would like to come down and speak at public comment? Thank you for coming down, sir. Can you please state your name and if you live or work in the City of Binghamton?
Joseph Gale, work in the City of Binghamton, president of the Greater Binghamton Association of Realtors. So one thing that I would like to bring to the city's council attention is, in Syracuse the other day, they withdrew the legislation for good cause eviction. It was voted down five to four. What Syracuse is working on is a plan with code landlords and tenants to have some mutual understandings to go through and see if they could come to an agreement instead of enacting the law. I know this has been a challenge for everybody. We've come out on, you know, these snowy winter nights. And, you know, it's been a tense, tense situation for a lot of people, but Syracuse said that they would like other cities like Rochester and Ithaca to, to realize that more laws are not better. Landlords need to hold other landlords accountable and host education sessions so that landlords, tenants, and the public can get together and try to resolve this. I think that we've gone through this a lot, but I'm asking city council to vote this down tonight. And a vote no would be a good thing for the city, as good cause eviction is not. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you state your name and whether you live or work in the City of Binghamton?
And I, one of those rapacious landlords. I gotta be honest with you. You know, I came to that meeting a couple of weeks ago and, and God, you would think anybody that owned property was either a racist or a greed monger or, I mean, just the, the the negative stuff that was coming out trying to destroy the reputation landlords. I found it sickening, okay? I bought a two-family house because I needed a place to live, okay? I was 26. Borrowed money from my parents for a down payment, bought the house, fixed it up, painted, put a new roof on. Couple years later, in my mother's neighborhood, a house came up for sale. People had died. I bought it. Moved over there. In the intervening years, two more houses in that neighborhood came up for sale. I talked to the folks, the children of the people who had lived there. If you're not interested, I'd be interested in buying it. I did it basically to keep the landlords out, okay? When my mother passed away 10 years ago, I got a small inheritance, like 50 grand. I went in, rebuilt the front porch. That was 16,000. Gonna do deck on the back. That was 18,000. A new roof, 19,000. I mean, I have made this a major portion of my financial plan. I guess what I, what I resent the most is it affects different people differently. Listen, I'm 67. I'll be getting out of this soon. I just, I can't do this much longer. But it really puts the onus on small landlords. Large landlords, the hedge funds, the corporations, they mostly rent to students. Every year, those students leave and then they can raise the rents, you know, far beyond the 8% or whatever is allowed for in the law. But small landlords, you can't. So, you know, it's, it's I've already called my tenants home. Listen, I'm sorry, I have to raise the rent, okay? Some of my places are like, I have one that's a single bedroom, 625. I pay the heat, okay? My highest rent is 850, okay? So that means that I would get, you know, well, then. So I'm gonna read one of the letters I wrote. Dear John, recently Binghamton City Council passed legislation entitled Residential Rentals-Prohibiting Eviction Without Good Cause. This legislation will fundamentally alter the rental housing market in Binghamton and by interjecting city council and the court system into the relationship between tenants and landlords. Apparently, mutual respect, common sense, and a fair and free market are no longer enough. City Council, after hearing anecdotal evidence from some tenants who faced large rent increases or eviction from new building owners, took a new state law which was written to address housing horror stories in New York City and made some changes. The state law exempts small landlords who own no more than 10 rental units. City Council decided that they would change that definition to no more than one unit. That change affects hundreds of truly small landlords, teachers, firefighters, nurses, and workers at hundreds of local businesses who scratched together a down payment 10, 20, 30 years ago. Like me, these investors bought their properties in neighborhoods to prevent neighborhood blight or to provide a way to pay for their children's education. For many investors, these investments were successful. For some, it was a disaster. Now city council wants to change the rules and those changes affect both me and you. Following are the ways that will impact you.
You have about 40 seconds left.
Thank you. Leases will be required. I've never asked you or any of my tenants to sign a lease. Mutual respect, common sense, and an unsigned list of mutual expectations and responsibilities went a long way to answering, to ensuring a pleasant, peaceful, and affordable living experience for you. Dozens of my former tenants have gotten married, started families, and bought homes on their own, and I've celebrated their successes. Rents will go up every year. This new city law, in addition to making it more difficult to evict someone, will limit rent increases to the rate of inflation plus 5%. I just straightened that out with the Corporation Council. In a calendar year. Should a local, should a landlord fail to increase the rent in a given year, they will lose the ability to exercise that increase in the following years. In essence, the Binghamton rental housing market will come to resemble New York City rental housing market where rents go up every year and relations between tenants and landlords become adversarial.
Your time is up.
Can I finish my letter, Mr. It's brief.
Go ahead, Mr. Whelan.
In essence, the legislation brings about rent control for small landlords, for small landlords anyway. For hedge fund and corporate entities that rent to students, this law has little effect. In closing, I want to thank you for being a terrific tenant, for shoveling when I couldn't and respecting me, the apartment you live in, and your neighbors. As I get older and begin to sell off my properties, I hope that you will consider buying the property that you live in or one of my other properties. I apologize in advance for raising your rent. It is, it is a regrettable consequence, but a foreseeable consequence. Over the next few years, we will see the negative impacts of this law, and I hope you remember who is responsible for the problems that arise. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else would like to come down and speak at public comment? Good evening. Please state your name and if you live or work in the City of Binghamton.
Absolutely. My name is Allison Donnelly and I'm the Executive Officer of the Greater Binghamton Association of Realtors, and I represent the Realtors living and working in the area. I want to echo what our president had just brought up, the fact that Syracuse has made the decision to, at this point, say maybe there's a different way to get to the end goal, which is a cooper, better cooperation within our city with landlords, tenants, and code enforcement and keeping our properties to the point where they are habitable. And we're putting in place programs that help landlords actually repair their properties. I mean, if you talk to some landlords, the cost of actually getting the loans and the money to do the repairs is exorbitant at this point. But maybe we get this group together and we do what Syracuse is doing. So I believe I emailed each and everyone on the council. Unfortunately, I did not hear back from anyone, but I was hoping, prior to this meeting, one of you could reach out, and maybe you have, to the city council in Syracuse and ask them what this program, obviously, there wasn't a lot of detail for ourselves, you know, reading the article about the program, but I thought maybe in your role, it's something you could work alongside them and say, how did they do this? What are their plans? I think Syracuse is a great microcosm of, you know, what, what we can expect to happen in our own market in the future if we watch what they've done and what they're planning on doing. We do have other examples. We have, you know, other cities that are going to go ahead and pass the legislation so we can see what they're doing. But we also have Syracuse. And now we have two examples, you know, two different types of examples of what may happen in these areas. I was just hoping that the council could and would be willing to say, hey, let's talk to Syracuse and see what they, what they can offer us on what their plan is. What does it look like? I know there's already articles coming out showing how the soft cap in New York City is actually going to go to the 8.2%. And the year prior, you know, it would have been in the 3.2%. We're already going to see the most disenfranchised groups paying higher rents because of the cap that's put in place. I mean, I think the article I sent each of you referenced how cab drivers were against the, the automatic fee originally. But people, if they see that they have to choose one, they're gonna choose the highest one, right? I mean, they're gonna choose the higher one. You're gonna take a landlord who would have sat back and said, hey, you know what? If I have to make repairs next year, I'll raise the rents, but this year I'm fine. I don't, I don't need to do that. And we know there's good landlords out there that make that decision every day. And we cannot put them in the same group as those that might abuse a tenant. And I think there's good laws in place already protecting tenants. I think we have to say, let's take the laws we have currently and put them in effect rather than being punitive to individuals that are here making a living. And, and I do want to echo, I, I hope that we can have serious conversations that don't include disdain for individuals that are landlords. They're good people in your community. They're your constituents too. And, and I think that the vitriol and disdain for people that support landlords and are here speaking, I think it's been untenable, and I would love to see this group turn that conversation around and not be part of the fitting of landlords and tenants against each other. That's not how we want this city to, to grow up and continue to thrive. I have the best interests of the city at heart because I, I represent over 400 Realtors in this area and another 100 affiliate members doing business in our area. I want all of them to succeed and I want all of our, our residents to succeed. And, and there's good evidence that when you control property, you change the economy within the city itself. Because people say, I'm not going to invest in an economy where I don't have choices with my own private property.
You have a little under a minute.
I really just hope that you'll take that into consideration and ask Syracuse, have the conversation. I think it's a great opportunity for us to say, let's put the brakes on before we make a decision that we can't retract. We're already seeing, I believe Hadassah said, we're already seeing people retaliating, landlords retaliating, saying, hey, if this is gonna go in effect, I'm gonna do something punitive now to my tenant. And, and we don't want that. We don't want that. We want tenants to have rights. We want landlords to have rights, but we don't want one at the expense of another. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and if you live or work in the City of Binghamton.
Hello, my name is Salca. I live in Binghamton and work in Binghamton. And the reasons why we need good cause is for the simple fact that's happening now. Landlords punitively raising up their rent because they know a good cause is coming. That's a good reason why we need it. The other thing is, another red flag in that letter, that you didn't have your tenants sign a lease. Yeah, that's another reason why we need good cause. I've been organizing around this issue for almost four years. And I spent hours in landlord and tenant court and seen how many times good cause could have prevented from somebody being homeless. I did write a statement, and it's funny how they're mentioning the, the one city, Syracuse, that decided to go down and not protect their tenants. Well, today, the City of Binghamton has the opportunity to take a critical step in protecting tenants by voting for the good cause eviction. This policy is about fairness, is about stability, and ensuring that hard-working residents are not displaced without a reason. Across New York State, cities like Albany, Kingston, Ithaca, Poughkeepsie, Beacon, Newburgh, Nyack, Hudson, New Paltz, Rochester, and Fishkill have already passed good cause eviction, recognizing that housing security is essential to building a strong community. These cities have taken action to protect tenants from unjust eviction and extreme rent hikes, ensuring that people aren't forced out of their homes without a valid reason. And if my landlords decide to do repair to raise my rent, I'm okay with that, because guess what? At least I'm living in a suitable place and my roof is not leaking and I'm not collecting mold. So I'm okay with raising rent if you are fixing the home. But it's disheartening to see that Syracuse failed to pass good cause, leaving thousands of renters vulnerable. No city should allow profit to come before people, right to stable housing. Binghamton has had a chance to do better, to stand with tenants, working families, and the broader community. Of course, landlords and real estate groups have pushed back against this law. Many argue that it's the limits, it limits their ability to manage their properties freely and discourage investments in rental housing. Some claim that it makes it harder to remove problem tenants or raise rents in response to raising causes. But let's be clear, this law does not stop landlords from making fair profit or evicting tenants from legitimate reasons like non-payment or property damage. It simply ensures that the tenants are treated fairly and not displaced without just cause. Passing good cause means fewer families facing homelessness, more stability for renters, and a city that prioritizes the well-being of its resident. As the cost of living rises, we need policies that keep people housed and ensure that no one is left vulnerable to unfair displacement. I urge the Bing, City of Bing, the Binghamton City Council- I urge the Binghamton City Council to follow the lead of other New York City and vote yes on good cause eviction today. Housing is a human right. It's not something that someone deserves. And today, we have the chance to make that right a reality for more than people in our cities and to see the tenants that I've worked with, hear that good cause has passed. That's going to be really, really make their year because till this day, I still get phone calls to say, hey, this is what my landlord did. And I was like, unfortunately, we don't have good cause, so they can do that. So I would love for this to actually go past so that we could protect all our vulnerable tenants. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else would like to come down and speak for public comment? Seeing nobody else would like to speak, Madam Clerk, can you read any public comment that was emailed in?
To Binghamton City Council from K and N Corcoran, we would like to recommend that the council pass this bonding proposal to pave the Ross Park Zoo parking lot. We are longtime supporters and volunteers at the zoo, and this improvement is long overdue. Thank you for your attention. From Michael Costi, city of Binghamton resident, hello, former colleagues. I didn't think I would ever write in a public comment, but I can't hold my tongue. I'm writing today in opposition to the agreement with Siemens. This is one of the shittiest deals I've ever seen. The first problem I have with the agreement is the installation of over 40 EV chargers across the city. Less than 5% of vehicles on the road are EVs, and the Trump administration has ended the mandate for electric vehicles, meaning even less will be produced and sold. This is a gross waste of money. There are a lot of uncertainties with the numbers of this agreement, which haven't been answered. How does a fully-staffed fire station use nearly the same amount of energy as an underpass? The lack of data is concerning. How do we not have usage data on Marabato Stadium and the Ross Park Zoo? The next problem I have with the agreement is the cost and the irresponsible spending. We would be financing this for 20 years. Most, if not all, of the equipment we would be purchasing will not last nearly that long. This is the equivalent of financing yesterday's newspaper. This project will cost taxpayers over $4 million and $1.5 million in interest alone. In 2025, the city will pay off over $8 million in debt, which is nearly 25% of the property taxes that will be collected. It is not the time to add to that number. Imagine what the city could accomplish if there was an extra $8 million in the budget not going to debt. The notion that Siemens has to close on this by next week is utter nonsense. It is refreshing to see that you guys are looking into this deeper and not wastefully approving millions of dollars of debt for the city. Irresponsible spending unfortunately seems to be a common theme in the David and Cram administrations. This way of thinking is why the city is in debt up to their eyeballs. Binghamton needs a negotiator on the fourth floor, not an order taker. Do the smart thing for the taxpayers and kill this deal. Make Binghamton fiscally responsible again. Thank you. The government is like a baby in Alimentary Canal with a big appetite at one end and no sense of responsibility at the other.
Seeing all public comment has been read into the record, and no one else would like to speak, I'm going to close public comment. We're going to move on to the review of the mayoral veto. It's introductory ordinance O-25-11, considered in finance, which will be held over by Council Member Kavanaugh. But before he begins, I would like to read the mayor's veto letter into the record. Dear President Dundon, I have vetoed O-24-11, an ordinance to amend the 2025 Clerk's Office Budget to adjust for responsibility adjustments. This ordinance has not received approval by the city's Board of Estimate and Apportionment, nor has it received legal counsel approval prior to being presented to my office. Sincerely, Jared M. Cram, the mayor. Councilmember Kavanaugh, it's all yours.
So we're here to discuss and review the veto. I don't think we have to vote on it tonight. I thought we had one more meeting. Yes?
The next meeting that you'd vote to override.
Yes. So what happened, just to, I don't know if anyone got the update, this afternoon, E and A, so estimate apportionment had held this over while we were considering it and while it was on the mayor's desk, and this afternoon, estimate apportionment voted to reject this. So they rejected it. The mayor has vetoed it, so it's back to us. But I'm not exactly sure what sort of showdown we're looking at if it's, we override the veto tonight and you're faced with a negative vote from estimate apportionment and the comptroller not willing to sign off either. So I'm looking for more legal counsel, hint, hint, Corporation Council, before I would vote to override the veto. Maybe others have other differences, other opinions at the moment. I don't know. I'm here to listen.
Vetoed today or what is the, like, okay. I mean, like I said before, I still stand on voting for it. Like, it was approved in the budget. I, you know, I'm just, sorry, I'm just confused, you know, why it's not, it's being turned down. It's not fair to the person that's doing the work inside of the clerk's office. So that's just, I felt the same way, and, you know, I'm in support of.
I mean, the way I look at it is the city has set precedent for the last three years without having a commissioner or deputy commissioner of the Department of Public Works by giving a responsibility adjustment. And if you're going to do that at the managerial level, what does that show to the rank and file when you do not back them, when they're actually doing one and a half time at work and not getting the same pay, but yet they want to do that when it comes to a whole department head?
I agree with you, Member Dundon.
I think I would just echo, I do support still what we previously passed, but I don't understand what the, like, are we allowed to vote tonight? Are we supposed to vote tonight? Are we, that's what, okay.
What's the timeframe for, I know there's a window for our response to, oh, go ahead. For the response to mayoral veto? Is if we table it, do we miss our window to override?
So you can table it for ordinances and resolutions, and this is an ordinance, you can override it the same day as veto for local laws. That's when it gets read in at one meeting and then has to get overridden at another meeting. And that's minutes to a home rule law.
We can vote tonight, but must we vote tonight? We have a, how many, how long window to override a veto?
Yeah, typically, it's done at the next meeting for resolutions and ordinances after it gets returned.
Seeing that we would have to the next business meeting to vote on this, I will entertain, oh, we don't?
We don't.
That's what we're.
We don't.
So is this something we may want to go into executive session for legal counsel on? I would be interested in your legal questions, Councilman Kavanaugh, whether they're public or in an executive session.
I mean, I don't think we've discussed this, we haven't had a chance to really discuss the implications of this as a body, so. Do we, willing to go into executive session for 10 minutes and hash this out a little bit, talk to Court Counsel?
Entertain a motion to go into executive session for up to.
I'll make the motion.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
And again, this is to understand the legal implications of overriding this veto.
Thank you.
We can be called that for the relationship.
Just for the people at home to clarify a little bit, the reason why we went into executive session is this was a personnel matter. And anytime it's with any employee or personnel with the city of Binghamton, that is not something that needs to be discussed on public record. So that's why we went into executive session, seeing that the executive session is over, I'd like to pick back up with the meeting. So we'll pick up right where we left off on the introductory to ordinance oh twenty-five dash eleven. Can I get a motion to overrule the mayor's veto?
I'll motion, I'll second.
Hearing a motion in a second, is there any conversation or discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Murray, um, excuse me, I was going to start with Councilmember Rathmell to give Councilmember Murray a chance. Councilmember Rathmell. Councilmember Matavetsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Murray.
Aye.
Council President Dundon.
Aye.
Thank you, that is seven zero.
So moving on, we are going to second red legislation, this is introductory of local law L twenty-five dash oh one, considered in planning, and I will turn it over to Councilmember Rathmell.
Thank you, President Dundon, I'd like to make a motion to adopt local law twenty-five oh one, a local law to prohibit eviction without good cause.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second, discussion.
I think I would just want to represent several weeks of both public and internal discussion has been held since this legislation was introduced last year. For those who haven't followed along, I would direct you to the town hall that was held at January thirteenth. You can find the link to that video on the council's page. Following the last business meeting, the planning committee met to make final amendments related to the effective date of this legislation. And to clarify two grounds for removal included in the ordinance, namely the definition of nuisance. And the parameters of withdrawing a property from the housing market. To my knowledge, council members have addressed every inquiry that has been sent our way regarding this law. In addition to speaking with other municipalities who have passed this legislation, I will also represent that I have been in communication for months with advocates in Syracuse. So some of the conversation recommended earlier has also already occurred, we have taken into consideration. And I'm saying we, I should in large part just say I, because I know others likely have comments to make, but we've taken into consideration the concerns brought. And want to clarify that good cause eviction protections do not remove the right of landlords to reobtain possession of their property or to increase rent within a reasonable margin. The rights of a landlord to consider eviction for non-payment nuisance or any other lease violation remains unaffected or unaffected. I wasn't planning to share this part, but since my data earlier was called anecdotal. I do want to make sure we're factually considering what is being represented when landlords talk about how difficult it already is to evict a tenant. Nine hundred and sixty evictions were filed in Binghamton City Court in twenty twenty-three. Six hundred and twenty-eight or sixty-five percent of those resulted in a warrant of eviction. By the time this legislation was brought in twenty twenty-four, eight hundred and forty evictions had been filed in Binghamton City Court. Five hundred and thirteen or sixty-one percent resulted in a warrant of eviction. So rather than being impossible to evict. The reality is that over sixty percent of evictions filed within Binghamton City Court already results in successful displacement and repossession. The last piece of data I do also want to share because we are considering this a critical preventive measure is that last year, just over twelve hundred and fifty individuals. And seven hundred and fifteen families with children accessed emergency shelter across the county. That represents a hundred and eighty percent increase since twenty twenty in the number of families left with no other option but to seek shelter. And we've seen even higher increases among our unsheltered populations as well. I think we've been clear, we see this as one tool in a broader toolbox to address homelessness and housing instability in the city. For over a decade, Binghamton leadership has been forming committees and commissioning task forces to address inequities within housing, and we're still seeing the numbers I just represented, putting a pin in this conversation is the kind of an action that got us here, it will not get us out. I think that's all of my comments for this evening.
You think, you think I got something to say, Council President? Okay, um, try to gather my thoughts on this, but ultimately, I think this. I want to vocalize my support for good cause eviction, uh, that's why I introduced it, I still think it is a necessary measure for us to take at this time. And through all of the receiving, receiving comments and feedback and the discussions that we've had on this, I think I've delved even deeper into data to illustrate the conditions of housing in Binghamton, and it's only reaffirmed my commitment and to, to passing this, but also just to illustrate the the issues that are at hand, and I think if you're to look at the, um, the fair market rate, the fair market value for apartments across Binghamton, the Binghamton metropolitan area, and if you to look at that graph and see the exponential growth in rental increases, and then you're to say that there, there is no reason to, to limit rent increases, I think that's that's kind of absurd, because over four years, there's something like a thirty or forty percent increase in the rental rate, um, depending on the type of unit there. Their type of rental unit, so there has been a very increasing unsustainable trend of rental increases. And it coincides with the cost of living expenses that are experienced, whether it's in, in healthcare or at the grocery store. Everything continues to go up and our, our wages are not keeping pace with the, the cost of living. So this gives us an opportunity to begin to stabilize at least one portion of that, which is the, the housing expenses in, in rent. It still allows landlords to, to make rental increases, but it makes it so that they're a little less jarring and more predictable, and I think that's absolutely necessary, given the conditions that we're in right now. I think lastly, the there's a cause and effect relationship between like me being on council and introducing this. The, the housing conditions in Binghamton and how they've affected me personally and had driven me to be involved in community organizing and activism. And really digging into this issue and trying to find solutions, that's, that, that's why I'm here, and that's why people voted for me, and that's why I want to introduce this and begin to address some of the issues with our, our current housing market. I think it's, it's really a, going to be a benefit for tenants, and it's going to bring some necessary stability in Binghamton, so I, I hope my fellow council members support this and vote in favor of it, I I know you've all spent a lot of time and had a lot of discussions reviewing, reviewing information and also speaking to different residents and, and stakeholders on this issue, but I I strongly encourage you to vote in favor, I think this is absolutely necessary, so, thank you.
Guess I'll take a stab at it. So I believe one of our public comment people brought up the idea that, um, like basically like we're, we're bleeding out, right, with evictions, um, and we have to do what we can, kind of life support, kind of a, a visual, I'm just digging back, trying to find the, the comment. And so I want to flip the idea of the, the pause or the put a pin in it and, and think about good cause as a pause in keeping people in their apartments and keeping their rent within some soft bounds. I, I am absolutely concerned about the long-term impacts of this on the market, um, and I, I, I do, I do share those concerns, I, I've heard those concerns, I've been trying to understand, um, this is a, a big topic, um, but I, I do believe that this pause is a pause that is needed right now. And that we can figure more out while we have this pause in place, right? So in the pipeline, right, we've, we've heard comment after comment that in order to lower rent, we need more housing. So in the pipeline, we have the Town and Country, we have work with First Ward Action Council. We put in funding for Southern Door Community Land Trust. There are other projects that are in, in the works that are at various levels of, of grant funding and tax, all these kind of complicated things that make it hard to get affordable housing built. But having this pause while that housing is built, um, seems like a, a step in the right direction. I guess I'll throw out there that I, I do think that we should make sure we come back and reassess after a year or after two years, um, there will be more information coming out of Rochester, we saw that they put forward a law that, um, that they will, they will actually do a study up there. So there will be more information about the longer term effects on it. You know, in my district, I, I think I've mentioned before, I got a call from a woman that I can't reach anymore because her only phone was her landline. And her rent was being tripled after, I think it was twenty, I can't remember, it was twenty or thirty years of living in her property in the South Side. And that's the kind of pause, like, um, that we're, we're talking about while we get the senior housing in place, right? So I guess I'm, I'm putting forward a support of putting this into place now. But not making that a stance that I necessarily support it in perpetuity. The state law sunsets. I, I think we will want to, I, I would like to reassess before that sun, I think it's a ten-year sunset, which is, I won't be here anymore. But I, I do, I, I think that this is, is a, a solid step. There's also one thing that I have not heard from public comment here that speaking to other councils. And that's the demographic of pro-good cause landlords. Other communities like New Paltz and Kingston actually had pro-good cause groups of landlords that came to speak. And I, I wanted to understand them because they were a group that we have not, I've, I've, I've heard from a, a number of Southsiders that are landlords that, um, have not had any objection to good cause, so there are landlords that I have found and had conversations with in my district or in my neighboring district, um, that are not opposed to this, but they would not label themselves as supporters either. They're a neutral and they do not come to the meeting or, um, these types of meetings, so I wanted to represent that they exist. But in the communities like New Paltz and Kingston, I, I reached out and I had conversations both with, um, with some of these persons, and for them, um, they're big the, aside from just generally, you know, ideologically thinking this is the right thing to do, their business interest in it was their property values. And they said, if the biggest problem with my property values is that there's a slumlord next door and his tenants won't call code and he won't and, or they won't even call their landlord because they're afraid they're going to get evicted if they call their landlord and ask for some work to be done, not even calling code on their landlord. And therefore, the properties are deteriorating around my property, and I'm a good landlord, and I want to make sure that there is no hold, that this holdover stuff goes away so that tenants are not concerned about getting their buildings fixed. And, and, and it was, it was an interesting argument that I wanted to share here because it's not something that I've heard from anyone in Binghamton. Hopefully, hopefully that's right, hopefully we see some improvements in, in housing quality from this and, uh, positive, uh, neighborhood directions, and that will benefit obviously tenants and, um, and landlords. I hope we consider additional laws and also have a strong rollout. We lost, uh, former legislator Whalen is no longer here. I know from my experience, I've lived in apartments, uh, with friendly arrangements with no, no lease. I, I think that's relatively common, especially in my district, uh, with local landlords. I would love to see, um, a strong rollout from our planning committee. In terms of like a one pager to assist, uh, both, weren't two, maybe two different one pagers, something to assist tenants in understanding what's going on and something to assist landlords in knowing what's going on as well as some lease support, right? So all these landlords now need leases, that is, they probably should have had them before, but it's something that we really need to support them with, and I'm hoping that will be an opportunity to work with, um, groups like the Realtors Association. To make sure that we're getting strong leases in place. I also learned a little bit about, and it's a little bit confusing, but I wanted to bring it up. There is something, it's not exactly called eviction insurance, but there is insurance that is available, I'm, I'm pulling up the progressive website. Landlord insurance that can cover, um, things like eviction costs. I, I, I have heard stories from council members in places that have put this through where landlords have had to sell their properties because of evictions, um, and I don't want that to be our, our local, local landlord situation. So I, I think that there's some education to do, and I think there's some partnership opportunities with that, but I, I guess I'm, I'm putting forward my, my support, but also my support of continual or checkpoint reassessment, thank you.
I'll go next, um, to be on the forefront of, uh, new law and have progressive thinking is something that this city has needed for a long time. The status quo that's been going on has failed this city for decades. I do think we need to go forward with this law, but I definitely want to stay in touch with the Realtors Association. And I would like to circle back in a year to see if there's any amendments that need to be added or changed to the law, just in case it does have a side effect that maybe I'm not aware of, I mean, I will never have the housing knowledge of council members Rathmell and Hotchkiss. But it is something that I think we should have continuing talks with, it just bothers me that landlords never reached out to talk to council until they thought the sky was falling. Like, these are conversations that our constituents and our residents should have with us at all and any time. And the fact that you only wait till you think you're going to be backed in a corner to want to reach out and talk to us makes me question, are you doing it in good faith, or are you doing it just because you're trying to cover your own backside? So I, I think in moving forward, this is something that we need to see how it plays out. I mean, anytime you're going to enact a new law, everyone will say, well, wait, 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 if that was the case, we would still be using the original constitution, we wouldn't even have the Bill of Rights. So that's not how this is supposed to work, but we can't just vote this through and then forget about it, we need to keep make sure tenants are being protected and it's being utilized for the tenants and still talk to the Realtors and the landlords, because if there is something we missed, we can come back in a year and say, hey, let's tweak this a little bit, because we weren't sure what was going to happen until it played out. That's all I have, thank you.
I think Councilman Matavetsky and, uh, Council President Dundon have, uh, largely encompassed a lot of my feelings on the law. The sort of package format of this law as it came from the state, I do not think will stand as a shining testament to the legislative prowess of, uh, New York State Senate and Assembly. But it's what we have, and it's addressing important inequities in the eviction, in the tenant landlord relationship and in the eviction process, um, there's some major inequities that, uh, and retaliatory evictions and and, um, just unbalance in the current system. Simply providing that, that eviction must be for good cause is, I think, a step forward in having a sensible and humane housing system. Balanced against that is the interest of private property and, and landlord rights, and I think we have to recognize that landlords are there are, sure, mom and pop landlords that have one or two properties, and we need to be on the lookout for their their well-being and their interests and, and the role they played in our community and giving people affordable places to live. But overall, landlords are in this to make money, it's a business. And I, I, I don't think it should be ignored that there's ways that this is making everyone's business more efficient. Rents will become, uh, perhaps closer in, in a band. More price to what the market should be. Landlords that are keeping properties up and in good shape will have an easier time attracting tenants. The Board of Realtors like discussing the fact that landlords might be fleeing Binghamton and buying in Johnson City or in Decot because we have extra rules here in Binghamton, but what about tenants being more attracted to Binghamton as a rental place, because now we have more tenant protections, we have more ways to make their lives easier, so I think this can be an opportunity for landlords as well. I am concerned about some of the, uh, I, I'm broadly in favor of the, the meat and potatoes of the law, the, the good cause portion, the lease, uh, having a lease portion, uh, I am concerned about some of the timing issues, that's one thing I will be keeping a close eye on next year, and I, I echo my fellow council members that this is not a, uh, set it and forget it law for us, this is something that we're going to be monitoring. And that we don't have the resources and, uh, really just the resources that some of our, our larger municipal brethren have to, to do very detailed studies going forward. We have community resources and we have ways to collect data and to see what's, what's happening with the law, and we're following that. So, and it will be, uh, you know, just by me if necessary, if I, if I, I mean, going forward. So I want, I want, well, for the landlords to know and understand that, I, I'm, uh, I come at this from, from a, you know, background as a, as a, as a longtime landlord, and I, I'm sympathetic to, uh, to changes if necessary, but overall, I think we are taking a step forward in, uh, equity and, uh, making our community a stronger, uh, stronger place, not, not a weaker place.
You know, I, I, everyone has said like everything that I've thought of, uh, saying, I'm grateful, um, just to serve with council members that we first care about the community and our constituents and the reason why we all ran, you know, I do understand that, um, you know, people may be upset about this, but we are really taking in, uh, the community and our other constituents who don't have the voice, um, but, and doing the right thing. I, I grew up in Binghamton and, you know, just driving in the morning and seeing, you know, so much homelessness just all around is very concerning and alarming to me, and if we can just, it, it's not going to be, uh, this law is not going to solve everything, but it's gonna, it's gonna block a lot of it and stop a lot of, a lot of what's going on, and I'm grateful, um, to just be a part of it, thank you to Nate, Rebecca, like everyone who's done their due diligence on this. You know, I, I, at first I was, you know, reading up on it, I'm like, oh no, it's going to be a big thing. But sometimes, even if it's going to be, be a big thing, you have to do the right thing, so, thank you.
I'd like to share, so I echo the sentiments of, um, the rest of, um, you all, and I do think that this law is, um, necessary as it'll increase access to, um, affordable homes and housing opportunities and also, um, And also, you know, as you all were speaking, I was thinking of the high level of transparency I see for students attending schools and how it impacts their educational success. Students living in, you know, hotels and having to move from various sites of towns and just the instability even within their education, right? And so that's the piece that I feel like hasn't been mentioned, that I see like the impact of unstable housing or students who have to move out of the city. But due to McKinney Vento, right, has to be bused 20, 30 miles away to attend school. So I think that this is definitely necessary and it's a great step forward. And I'm also in support of reassessing a little bit later on to make sure that there's no unintended consequences as a result. But I do think that it's a positive step in moving the right direction to support our residents and increase, just increase their rights within housing.
Anybody have anything else?
I would just add, since it's been brought up, so Councilmember Hotchkiss and I have been and are in touch with local and regional legal services to develop materials and an ongoing education strategy. So that is already in the works and we look forward to not only sharing that, scheduling opportunities to discuss and continuing to hear feedback.
One thing I wanted to mention, I'd forgotten, we do have the recent development of Syracuse that the council voted five-four to withdraw their legislation for now. And as some of the presenters commented, or some of the citizens commented, they're having this board forum and these alternative processes. I think it's worth noting that Syracuse has a variety of other things in place that we don't in Binghamton, including a rental registry, a functioning rental registry, at least somewhat functioning, that they have other pro-tenant protections in place that perhaps make it less urgent to immediately adopt this sort of law and gives them a little more wiggle room that we frankly don't have right now in Binghamton.
Seeing nobody else has any other discussion, Madam Clerk, will you do the roll call?
Councilmember Rathmill? Aye. Councilmember Madavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you, that is seven zero.
We'll be moving on to first read legislation.
Council President, can I interject real quick?
Yeah.
So with the passage of the local law, the protections aren't in effect yet. The mayor still needs to make, have a public hearing and make his decision. So he can either veto this or sign it or take no action. And that's, by my estimation, making this officially in effect somewhere between two weeks and 45 days. Do you have anything else?
The only comment would be it won't become effective till filed with the Department of State.
Right. So we'll definitely have a press release if and when that happens to make sure everybody's informed. In the meantime, we'll be doing our, the education that you heard about and developing resources so people know how to move forward, whether you're a tenant or a landlord. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hotchkiss. So moving on, we're introductory ordinance 025-05, considered in finance, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Kavanaugh.
All right, I'd like to motion to pass 024-05, an ordinance to amend the 2024 sewage treatment budget to increase reimbursement and decrease personnel services.
I have a motion, can I have a second? Hearing a motion and a second discussion, please.
Just to refresh everyone's memory, this is basically taking extra money that's in the personnel lines right now that is not needed and funneling it back to the users. And in this case, users meaning municipalities that pay the sewage treatment plan. So we're getting a little extra reimbursement back.
Anybody else have any other comments? Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmill?
Aye.
Councilmember Madavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray? Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you, that is seven zero.
Moving on, introductory ordinance 025-07, which is considered in public works, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Make a motion to adopt introductory ordinance 025-07. This is an ordinance to amend the 2024 DPW budget for shared maintenance.
I'll second.
Having a motion and a second discussion, please.
This is a, I think this is a bill that came back that was pretty late to be charged to the city for the maintenance that happens here at Government Plaza. But that's all. If anybody has any other questions about that?
Nobody else has any other discussion?
Did we get clarification on why it came? I mean, this was the 2023 bill, correct?
I do not know.
Did we get clarification on how that was missed? From the control?
From what I remember from the meeting, he just said that they just sent it late, that they just sent it late. Like, they just gotten it. They didn't have a reason why. They just said that the county, that, you know, they were behind and they sent it.
The county senate over a year late.
Yeah.
And is now requesting payment.
Yeah, which, so, sorry.
Go ahead.
Are you done? No, yeah, go ahead.
So I did reach out on council's behalf to ask those questions and we did not receive a response.
Well, we can, we can hold it over.
There's a shocker. All right, any other discussion?
We can, I mean, if it's not a rush, if it's been paid, I mean, if it's a year late, like, it's not, it's not a rush if we, if people, I mean, if.
I'm okay voting on it.
Okay, if not, we can hold it over. I mean, I'm okay with that, either way.
Well, seeing I heard holdover mentioned, can I get a motion then to hold over?
No one wants, you don't have to.
I'll make a motion to hold over because I'd like to review the agreement.
Okay, I'll second.
Having a motion and a second, can we have a discussion on the holdover?
I mean, yeah, I'm okay with holding it over. I don't think we got all of the information that we needed and it's just really weird that we get a bill, you know, so far, you know, behind. So I'm in agreement with that, that's fine.
Yeah, and hearing that Councilmember Hotchkiss or the clerk reached out on his behalf and that there was no response, then yeah, I do think we need to hold this over and dig into this more.
Yeah, that's fine.
Any other discussion? So this is going to be voting on for the holdover. We have a motion in a second. Can we do a roll call on the holdover, please?
And just to be clear for Councilmember Murray, a holdover just means that it will be considered at the next meeting. Councilmember Rathmill?
Aye.
Councilmember Madavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you, that is seven zero.
Moving on to introductory ordinance 025-13, considered in finance, I'll hand this over to Councilmember Kavanaugh.
I'd like to motion to pass 025-13, ordinance to amend Chapter 405 Water and 405-77 shutting off water.
I'll second.
Having a motion and a second discussion.
As was outlined at the work session, the vast proportion of the outstanding receivables we have in the water department come from people owing over $500. And the collection resources are probably better used to pursue them than the larger number of folks that have a smaller balance. And, you know, when this law was passed, previously, you know, a $200 balance was a large balance. It's not so for the, you know, since water has increased in price, that's not the case anymore. So we're putting our, the idea here is to put our limited collection resources into getting the best fiscal results possible for the city, going after the major scoff laws, if there's a word. So more wood behind fewer arrows, I guess. That's all.
I think I would just want to put on record, I want to thank our city treasurer, Lawrence Harris, for being willing to meet with Councilmember Madavetsky and I to discuss implementing a strategy that would prevent the displacement of tenants from properties at risk of a water shut-off due to owner non-payment. So that is in conversation and they were receptive to that discussion. And I appreciate that.
Thank you, guys.
Anybody have anything else? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmill?
Aye.
Councilmember Madavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you, that is seven zero.
Moving on, introductory ordinance 025-16, considered in finance, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Okay, I'd like to motion to pass 025-16, an ordinance to amend the 2024 water budget for increased electricity.
Having a motion, can I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second discussion, please.
Just want to point out that this did get adjusted down to $1,500 instead of $45,000. So, and that should, that should cover the whatever outstanding bills there are. We shouldn't have to touch this one again.
Hearing no other discussion, Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmill? Councilmember Madavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you, that is seven zero.
So next is introductory resolution 25-06, considered in municipal and public affairs, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, President Dundon. I'd like to make a motion for introductory resolution R25-06. It's an ordinance to enter an agreement with the Binghamton University Harriet Tubman Center.
Second.
Having a motion and a second discussion, please.
Yes, so this is just basically an agreement between Binghamton University and the city for the Harriet Tubman Center, just for the city-owned light poles for the installing of banners. So that's just basically what this is about.
Anybody else have any other discussions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. I just wanted to quickly say, like, I appreciate all the work that's going into the Harriet Tubman Center and for freedom and equity. I think the historic landmarks that are around the city are.
Nice.
They're nice, but they also like are very educational. There's one, if you look outside the clerk's office, and there's people that always stop and look at it and read it. And so I know that there's like a knowledge building there. And I just want to recognize the work for that whole, that whole group that's working on that. So that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you, Nate.
Anybody else? Hearing none, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmill?
Aye.
Councilmember Madavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you, that is seven zero.
Next is introductory resolution R25-07, considered in municipal and public affairs, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, President. I'd like to make a motion for introductory resolution R25-07. It's a resolution to accept two, is that 20,000 or 200,000? Yeah, 202,000 from the Bureau of Justice Assistance.
Having a motion, can I hear a second?
I'll second.
Having a motion and a second discussion, please.
Oh, yeah, so this is just, the city of Binghamton is eligible to receive a grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, just to purchase two new police vehicles?
Yeah, I'm just going to chime in for a second. Anytime I think that we can get a grant that can save us from having to purchase out of our budget or to have to increase a budget for any department, I think we should always take the grant, but that's just my opinion. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rathmill?
No.
Councilmember Madavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Middleton? Councilwoman Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you, that is six one.
And next is introductory resolution R25-08, considered in rules and procedures, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Madavetsky.
I'd like to make a motion to pass introductory resolution R25-08, considered, oh, sorry, an ordinance to authorize agreement with General Code.
Having a motion, can I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second discussion, please.
Great. So we've been in discussion about trying to get General Code or a similar software system in place. For those of you that follow our legislation at home, our website is clunky compared to other cities. This will make it nicer for the public as well as internally as we onboard people within the city and they're looking up stuff in our code, that will be better. The clerk's office will be more efficient. There'll be nice workflows with Corporation Council. So there's just a lot of nice things. App, we're coming to 2025 here, you know, so I'm very, very excited about this. And this was an outgrowth of both the mayor and the clerks being at NICOM. And it's a testament to professional development and training and investing in employees and how that can help bring great ideas. You know, it seems like, may seem like a lot of money, but I think it'll save a lot of time both for Corporation Council and the clerk's office and make things a lot more efficient for the city. Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none, can we do a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Rathmill? Councilmember Madavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Middleton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you, that is seven zero.
So moving on to communications from council, I will start with Councilmember Rathmill.
I think I've represented what I was hoping to represent tonight. I do just want to thank again those who came out in support of good cause and shared their experiences for others who also shared. And I am really proud to be a part of this council for prioritizing addressing housing inequities within the city. So, thank you to the community, but also thank you to my fellow council members.
Councilmember Madavetsky?
All right, I'll start with the announcements here. Discovery Center, February 17th, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., is having a special Presidents' Day celebration. So there's extra activities included with admission, and that includes a focus on presidential pets. So I thought that was charming. They didn't do that last year. February 21st, at Discovery Center, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., is their third Friday free admission night. So that's, thank you to all the different groups that sponsor these free nights at Discovery Center to make sure everyone in this community is a child, can get to play in such a fun environment. February 17th, at the zoo, for Presidents' Day, they'll have a buy-one-get-one zoo admission. And February 22nd, they're going to be unveiling the mural mosaic, mural mosaics global roots project. It's a mural and reception at Ross Park Pavilions. I'm very excited about this. Community members have been making little tiny paintings and they've got digitized and they're turned into a giant mosaic. So it's like a community art project and I'm looking forward to seeing it. February 18th is the South Side Neighborhood Assembly at MacArthur School at 7:00 p.m. Council and Rathmill and myself will be there chatting it up with South Side residents and keeping people, continuing to keep everyone updated on all the goings on. As everyone is sick of me talking about blue bags, I continue to my work on blue bags. It's for people who are first time here. Back in August, I had a constituent comment that not only is South Side East a food desert in certain parts, it is also a blue bag desert and throwing out your trash is. it is also a blue bag desert and throwing out your trash is not so easy there. So I quickly found a business that was going to be interested in selling blue bags. And there's just been hurdle after hurdle. Everyone is trying to work together on this with the city. I'm not facing internal resistance, but it's been, it's been a challenge. My latest this week, because I heard that there's different prices at different stores, which there should not be. Every blue, every place selling blue bags is supposed to be selling them for the same price. So I went and I started buying blue bags at the various different sellers. I did find some price variation and I will be continuing to look into that. And because of that, new vendors are concerned that they're going to be accused of price gouging if they're charging. Because there's been reports that there's been under. I have not found that myself yet. I've certainly found people charging over. So I will continue to look into this. And once it gets settled, hopefully we will be selling blue bags in Southside East at at least one vendor other than Rite Aid, which is almost in Southside less. So, thank you. The journey continues. Please write to me with your problems with blue bags.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to welcome our new council member, Murray. Thank you. Thank you for answering the call of public service and look forward to working with you. Thank you all, my colleagues on council for voting in favor of Good Cause. I think this is a, again, it's really important step and I'm happy to continue to work with all of you on it. Lastly, I think there's a initiative on the north side to get homeowners to really utilize some of the available state money through NYSERDA to weatherize their homes. And I'm, I'm trying to work on that. And so if there's folks that are homeowners on the north side that would want to utilize some of the, the great resources that the state has for weatherization, please reach out where it's, that's the easiest way to do it to, for people to volunteer themselves. But I'm going to continue to work on that. So always, always housing stuff. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Kavanaugh? Councilmember Middleton?
Okay. So I'm, I want to start by, last week on February 4th in my district, there was a double homicide on Westland Court. I just wanted to reassure the residents that live in Westland Court who have been calling me. You know, like we, we saw today that the killer has been caught, but also I'm just, alleged, allegedly, sorry. I got to say alleged. Yes. Thank you. Allegedly. Yes, allegedly. Been captured. But I just want to continue to reach out to me with your concerns. I'm, you know, thinking of something at the moment that we can do just to kind of bring that feeling back to being safe in your home, but continue to reach out to me with your concerns. Next week, February 19th, at the Unitarian Church, we will be having a discussion regarding the noise ordinance that's coming up with Abel's Pub again. So if you live around Rotary, Beethoven, Seminary, Neeland, I, I handed out some flyers. I'm going to go back tomorrow and hand out the rest of them, but please attend this meeting. This way we could kind of come to a agreement or just your concerns regarding the noise. Last but not least, it is February. I love February because my birthday this month. I also love February because it's Black History Month. Power to the people. I, I always, I always, in Black History Month, I always leave a few quotes. So I'm just going to read off a few of them and just, to just, just talking about our, our current political climate. An injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. It's a quote from Martin Luther King. And freedom is never given, it is won. So those are just kind of a few of my favorite quotes from Black History Month. And just continue to, you know, live through those quotes. So that's it. I'll stop talking.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you. So with this being my very first meeting, I wanted to say thank you that I am honored to be serving the first district and the residents of First Ward. And I am excited to have the opportunity, right, to vote on important legislation on their behalf, like the, like, you know, or that impacts our housing or key issues for, or residents in our community. And, you know, just the, the supportiveness of you all in onboarding and this process, I really appreciate it. And as I said, I'm honored for the opportunity and look forward to doing the work that is necessary to be able to support our residents. So thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, girl.
So once again, I do want to thank Councilmember Murray. It's not easy to put yourself out there to be in public office, let alone get thrown into it where literally you get a, you get sworn in Monday, you're at a work session and then you're here at a business meeting on Wednesday. And some people don't know, but one of my biggest heroes of all time was Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And one of his quotes to me that I love the most is, "A true leader is not a searcher of consensus, but a molder of the consensus." And I think with the council that we have now, that we are a group of people that have natural leadership in us and we're not scared to ask tough questions and we're not scared to fight for the residents. And I'm very proud to sit here, not only as a member of this council, but also as president. Thank you. And after that, can I get a motion to adjourn?